Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the March 3rd, 2025 Farmington School Board Meeting. We did call the meeting to order at 5:30 and we went into non-public session to deal with some non-public board business. And we are back out and ready to go with the public portion of our agenda. We'd ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Johnston is excused this evening. She's still finishing up a pre-scheduled vacation. Is there any public participation at this time? Hearing none, we'll move down to minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 16th, 2024, Non-Public Session 3 and Non-Public Session 4.
Motion by Mrs. Parker.
I'll go ahead in a second.
Second by Mrs. Doyle, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Absent.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 6th, 2025, Public Session and Non-Public Session 1, 2, and 3.
Motion by Mrs. Parker, second by Mrs. Doyle, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reports, curriculum. Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Oh, good, good. Um, just a few things on here. And, um, number one, we are really paying attention to being compliant, of course, with our state testing standards and moving, um, sort of proactively to make sure that we get the best scores we can get and really know what our students, uh, know and are able to do. I, I believe that the scores that we see may not actually represent what they can do. So, one of the, um, spots where you can find a lot of information, I put a link on here for you, is the I-Achieve New Hampshire. And, um, when you look at percentage takers, uh, it shows that we had eighty-six percent, take the, um, SAT in high school testing. And that's concerning because when they do our scores, they take the entirety of the scores and they're going to get the average score, right? So whatever they're dividing by, um, is capped at ninety-five percent. So whatever your student body says you have for student enrollment, ninety-five percent of that have to have taken the test because that's the number they're gonna divide by or higher. You had a hundred percent takers, which is kind of rare from the data I've seen. You end up with, um, a smaller average than your students actually got for numbers, if you will. So you're dividing by, so if eighty-six percent take it, you're dividing by a higher number, which is gonna weaken your score. So, we have the test done in such a way that they have five days to do the makeup. Students and parents will know that if they're absent that day, they will have to make up that test. So, and, and I guess the one that we really paid attention to was the high school SAT scores because the other SAS scores are showing, you know, right at state average. They're not, they're not ninety-five percent to take the test. But, high school, as we know, um, students are, have a little bit higher rate of absenteeism sometimes. And so making sure that if they are absent, we know who they are and we can get them. And then the second thing is making sure that our enrollment, um, in the district actually represents what the state has on their books. And that can be something simple that Lori can do and just making sure, because students come and go and yes, Power School should update instantly, or not instantly, but nightly. But just making sure that that's the case. Because we also have some issues where students are in high set and they might still be being carried in Power School. So how do we wanna do that? Do we wanna make, have the high set kids take the SAT? Will they take the SAT, right? Or how do, how do we look at that? So we need to figure out who those people are. There's not that many of them. I'm sure we can figure it out. Lots of innovations happening around here, I gotta be honest. We seem to have a bunch of people who are just coming up with cool ideas. So I just thought, you know, maybe let us shine a light on some of that. The Valley View At-Home Reading Edition was kicked off. All students received their book packets. And our librarian, Eliza Quill, is, um, she's made up a display with the meter of the percentage of kids that are reading at home. Classes have a goal, the school has a goal, um, in terms of number of minutes read. And then there'll be, you know, awards given out, um, for different milestones along the way. So that's pretty exciting. We had a teacher step up from the middle school who's now doing yoga on Mondays. And, um, this was her second week. She has the K through 1, which is a very big group of students. Breaks them into two groups, um, and they go to the library and they come back. I was there today and they came back very Amish. They did, because they were a little crazy today, because again, inside recess, they had the week.
Excited to be back, in the recess. Lots of energy.
They, they came back, like, it was great. The librarian here has a couple of things going on. One of them is on Thursday because it, um, it, she's, has a group of students who are going up to Valley View, volunteers, because it's Read Across America Week. And they are going to the kindergarten and they're gonna, I think she has fifteen volunteers or something like that if they all show up. And they're gonna break into, like, groups of three or four and go to each classroom and do a buddy reading group. So, and she did that, all, like, that was just her idea and I thought it was really great. Getting to Y, which is a core group of students, teachers, and administrators that are going to UNH, to discuss YRB results, not necessarily in Farmington, but, but on the state as a whole. And they're gonna be broken up with different schools and they're gonna, high schools. Although it doesn't, you can include some middle school students, but mostly it's high school. And they're gonna discuss, like, things they can do in the community to, um, help kids, you know, with social, emotional well-being, um, any kind of drug or substances that might be in their lives and, and any of those things. So they're supposed to come back as a, like, a leadership team. So that's exciting. We also have a group of students going to UNH for a social studies discussion-based activity, which is also really exciting. Alright, I'm gonna move on. Uh, let's see. Uh, you know all the schools are doing Smart Goals and that stuff and we're, we're continuing to work on that. I put a couple of free resources on here just so I could mention them. Hopefully somebody watches this. The state has bought tutor.com, um, and it is a free twenty-four-hour tutoring with a real person. And so if you're at eleven o'clock and you're sitting down to do your calculus or your geometry or your algebra, or I'm not gonna throw math under the bus, but let's. You know, you can get, log in and there is a tutor on there. Um, and I'm told it's not a chatbot, that it's like a real person. So that is exciting. Discovery Education, we've had that before, but, um, just trying to push it along. And then Zello, which is a college and career readiness program that is free to everyone in the state. And I believe parents can log in too. So, most of these things, there's a parent access as well. So, just some good things happening there. Let's see, March 6th, data-wise, is continuing, that's this week. But also March 6th, just so you know, freshman parent open house from six to seven at the high school. So, any parents who are interested in taking a tour of the high school, seeing what a freshman's schedule looks like, meeting the building, level admin, uh, school counselors. We're gonna have light snacks and some water. And, um, teachers are staying to, um, certain teachers have volunteered to stay and, um, present, like, freshman science or, um, you know, art classes. And we have a pretty group of teachers who have volunteered. I think at last count it was almost eleven. So I just wanna give a shout-out to them because they're staying till seven at night and, um, volunteering to do that. And that's really great. And then, maybe Giselle can talk about, um, what's gonna happen with the freshmen that are going up to.
Rising freshman will be going up on Thursday. And so then they'll go home and be all excited and hopefully get their parents to go, come back Thursday night.
Yep. And, um, at the same time, Beth has, um, at Valley View, a coffee and conversation going on that night as well. So March 6th is kind of a, a big night. Working on the curriculum webpage, feel free to visit it. Got some things on there. Giselle and I looked at them today. Portrait of a Graduate, um, there's, all of our assessments are on there and how parents can learn more about our assessment tools and how we use them. There's resource links, um, and things.
Standardized assessment?
Yes.
Oh, the standardized.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
SAS, P-S-A-G.
I don't want people thinking that their kids' test this week is gonna be on there.
No, no, no. Standardized. New Hampshire requires state testing and our STAR testing. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Would you just be able to send me maybe like a little flyer or pamphlet for Tiger Beat? I know you guys are still looking for volunteers and/or small stipend positions. So, I just, I'm gonna put it out, like, on my personal, like, Facebook page and I'll have people start sharing it too, that way we can get some other things in there.
I will send it to you, but I would like you to know you can go to the Tiger Beat's website and it would be right there.
What's that?
This is, um, this is our new Farmington School District website. And so I put a Tiger Beat link and I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you this PDF.
Can you send me, okay, yeah, yeah.
You want it PNG or JPEG or?
Yeah, doesn't matter, either way.
You're gonna put it on the Facebook?
Yep, I'm gonna put it on, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then you want it JPEG or PNG? Okay, um, yeah, I will.
Then I can share.
Shout-out to all the women in the room because it is Women's History Month. And seventy-seven percent of all educators are women.
Wow.
Just saying.
I believe it. I was the only man at one point in the entire elementary school.
Always said it.
Oh, one, will you talk about that? The, the art exhibit, by the way, is also librarian-based up here around the room.
Oh.
And it's a traveling expressive art contest called Youth Voices, Magnify Voices. Mac and I had the chance to read all the descriptions. It's worth reading them. It's all, um, art that is done in New Hampshire.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Back to the state, uh, testing, the testing standards.
Yes.
So we had eighty-six percent take the test.
Yes.
Was that after the window of makeup? So that was, do we, I guess my question is, was that a lower percentage and we were able to get it to eighty-six based on our makeup?
Most probably, yes.
Be interested to see how successful the makeup block was. You probably don't have that data, but, you know, how, how successful was that five, five-day window?
I think I could get it because we would have the dates that kids logged in. So we would have the testing date.
I mean, it's, it's nothing you have to research for me. I just was curious. It just still seems fairly low, but, that we missed fourteen percent. I don't know.
So I looked at some other schools. I poked around to see, well, what was their percentile? I never saw a hundred percent. I saw ninety-eight percent. I saw ninety-seven percent. But I also saw some schools that were around us too. So, and in that I-Achieve, you can go in there, you can change all, you can put any school in and browse around and see how we compare. But I do think we could get that information. And this year, I'll be more diligent about, you know, on test day, number of students. And then, we, I think we have six days before the window closes because of how April vacation falls this year. So, we should be able to get them in and we're gonna be sending out notices saying, you know, unless there's a waiver on file, you are required to take the test. And upon return, your student will have to, um, take the test at state, state law. So, trying to get those numbers up because then we'll have a better representation of what those scores mean. I just, I don't wanna sell us short until we know that we've followed the rules.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on the new website right now.
Oh, fancy.
Love it. Lori did a great job.
Go to the curriculum page.
I am. Literally.
Ah, yes.
Check it out, people at home.
Yes, people, we've been asking for this. You have been asking for this. Go on, go on, please. It's beautiful. It's easy to navigate. It's friendly. It's welcoming. Great job.
Student Services, hello.
Hello. So we'll start, as usual, have a look at the report in your folder and browse the statistics and ask any questions you may have.
Any questions, folks?
I'm all set.
I did not. Get mine to open now.
Easy.
I know that we're still down. Everyone's down, stop, but we're still down. We're down a little bit. But how's it going? Everything seems to be okay with, like, the work rooms?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll hang them.
Yes, yes, the faculty and staff that we have working for us and with us and helping our students here are doing an amazing job at what they're doing and how, and how they're helping kids and, you know, working together to brainstorm how to best support the community. Yeah, so it's doable.
Good.
Yep.
Just worry about you people.
Thank you.
In the, um, monitoring and plan review, it's coming right up, right?
Yes, yes. Yes, so we have completed all of the activities. So we did have our parent listening session right before break. And, um, had it, we had it here in the library, so.
Was it well attended? Usually not.
I, I guess, I think this is a matter of opinion, in the opinion of, um, the people that run it, yes. So, that's great. I was really excited to see some of the families come.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I was able to greet them at the door and thank them for coming and sharing their thoughts to help us help them better. So, that's good. Well, I'll find out the results of all of that.
Right.
With everything, I think. So, uh, we also had our classroom observation in February and that went very well in a little tour. So then the next step is that I'll get a draft report. And then I will meet with, um, the people that have the My Connection for the monitoring to review the report. And then they'll let us know what we're doing well and what, um, we might wanna focus on or make improvements or things we must improve. So that's monitoring and then, um, compliance, ninety-eight percent.
Alright, thank you. Financials.
Good evening and, um, our monthly spending continued about the same path as last month. We spent one million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eight cents in the month of February. Which brings our year-to, expenses year-to-date to ten million, seven hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Just a caveat, these numbers may have changed a little bit from what's in your folder. I reconciled cash today to the fund ten, so some of, there might be slightly different. The encumbrances from now until the end of the year, we're encumbering about another five million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, forty-eight dollars, thirty-seven cents. Bringing us to a forecast at end-of-year balance right now, one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents. That's to monthly revenue in February, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, twenty-four cents. Bringing our year-to-date revenue to twelve million, fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. So Fund Ten seems to, um, it seems that we've stabilized the spending to what we'd like to see during a particular month or any particular month, so about a million. So I feel like we're doing well there, um, something we'd like to continue doing. That's the big update for General Fund and I think that's all I have. Do I have any questions?
So is the freeze working?
Yes.
It is?
More or less. I think it's given us a good handle on it.
I thought you said we spent about the same, so it wasn't true.
Same as last month when we started. Yeah, that was, yeah, so kind of the, it's a good sign.
Have you been on, how long has it been going on the freeze? Has it been a while? I guess it has.
I think it's been a month.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know how the faculty is feeling, the freeze? Are they coming to saying that they're concerned or that things are okay? Are you getting any feedback in regards to that?
So, we're trying to prioritize, uh, issues for staff. So it's a high priority thing. We still, you know, it may be something that we can't control. We gotta go out and let it happen, um, and make the purchase. Good news is it's allowing us to hold our cards for things that can otherwise happen at the end of the year. So we're trying not to leave people out in the cold, um, while balancing the needs that are popping up every day. So, it's, it's a mix. I think we have people come to us. Some approvals are taking longer than they used to and we very much appreciate the staff for working with us on that.
Because there have been some unexpected expenses. We had pipes freeze and, you know, we had a lot of expenses around that that have come up as well that, you know, we just didn't have a choice. We had to clean up. So, um, there's been just some things on, but like, I know the high school reached out to me because it makes sense to purchase the covers for graduation now. You know, we wanna make sure we have the colors and whatnot that we want. Yes, that kind of expense, of course, we're gonna have the covers for the diplomas. You know, but other things, um, you know, I, I know that there was somebody who was pretty disappointed that, but it was in the budget and the budget was approved, so why can't I have it? I'm not saying no, I'm saying not now. It may come a little later. And she was a little disappointed.
Yeah, that's what happens with a freeze.
Yep.
Which is probably, and I get that disappointment and probably non-understanding of that. That's probably worth, um, addressing at some point with staff when we do budget, when we kick off budget season and say, just because it's in there doesn't mean we'll necessarily spend it when you necessarily need it. It's just, I think it's worth them understanding that that could happen. I get that feeling of disappointment. Alright, uh, any other questions from Mac?
No, thank you.
When's the next Pledge Committee meeting? Right around the corner, no?
No, it's later in the month.
Yeah.
I will say it is the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so it's... Did we have one during break?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, we had one, but it got canceled because we had met so many times already.
Yeah, or leading up to.
There was one, yes. It was canceled.
I see, I see, okay. Alright, policies. J-I-C-I is on here. Second round?
Yep.
Oh, I just closed it. Hold on. Sorry, guys.
And while you're doing that, Nicole, just the state had a very favorable response to the ones we'd already turned in.
Oh, good.
And so once we sent them the second copy, we're closed out.
Bye, good night.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I was able to download that as a JPEG.
Oh.
Yeah, so one less thing on your to-do list.
Thank you.
I just tried while I was here, so I was able to do it. So I'll make sure that we share it on Facebook and stuff too.
Thank you so much.
Because I know there's lots of people that could.
Yeah. We still have the gardening person, but it's just not done yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Alright, let's see. Was it in, it wasn't in tonight's because it was in last week, last month, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I didn't miss it because I didn't see it. And I know we all did the first read, um, the last meeting. Something's wrong with my computer. Giselle, do you have yours up?
I'm pulling it up right now.
I also have hard copy if you want to see it.
Perfect.
Because it was the new one, so I just wanna make sure that I'm doing it correct, I'm reading it correctly. See, well, look, I picked seven times, it won't come up. Okay, um, so we did the first read and discussed it at our last meeting, the new policy, policy J-I-C-I that we needed, um, for weapons on school property. I know we were all able to take a look at it. So, um, at this time, I would like to make a motion to adopt policy J-I-C-I, Weapons on School Property, as presented in our board folder, um, as a second and final read.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey. I just wanted to make sure I was correct. Should've just asked you, I make echo.
Okay. Unfinished business. The reason that I took, took this off of the last agenda and said, "Let's put it on this agenda," was very specifically so Mrs. Johnston could be here as well. So, I'm gonna ask that we do that again. I.
I agree.
Yeah.
I didn't have my dates right on her trip, so I didn't realize that she wouldn't be here tonight as well.
So for the seventeenth?
Please.
I think when she said she'll be back in March, I assumed, like, the first, not necessarily, like.
Employee handbook. That wasn't me.
We brought up employee handbook at the last meeting.
Yes. We did.
I believe that was in non-public.
Yes, because we were talking about snow days.
Yes.
And so it was a situation where we knew we would need to be looking at the employee handbook and updating the employee handbook.
Correct, because there were some other things that, as we had looked through it and had pulled it up at the meeting, felt like needed to be looked at and discussed.
Right, but, yeah, I didn't, okay, I, I guess I, when I saw it on the agenda, I almost asked Katrina why it was on there. Because we do have to look at it, but I, I'm not sure, the, the employee handbook that's in effect right now is through the end of the school year.
Right.
So.
I'm thinking more of a June thing and I'd also like to have employees have some feedback on it.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
I'll have her edit to June.
Yeah, and get feedback in between then and now.
I think we could all, like, just, you know, browse and take a look at it, but if you guys go through it, like, with the policies and just obviously edit it so then any of the changes are updates.
That's true. It needs to reflect policy.
Right, like, and it, right, and to reflect, like, because we've all obviously added some of that as well.
It's not on here, but I'm gonna bring it up. Office hours?
Yeah, I need dates.
Yes. Yes, we do need dates.
So sorry.
Are we sticking with after-school?
Yeah, I think that was the consensus. And Stacy and Nicole were gonna.
Because I think I missed that meeting.
You do, yeah. Stacy and Nicole, we're gonna take it offline to talk about dates and times.
Yeah, because we, well, there was, whatever month, was that last month? We just had a lot of conflicts with vacation and, um, whatnot.
I mean, I don't mind signing up for any particular date. It's just that I won't be here until three forty? Three thirty-five?
I mean, we could always start it at three and then, if you wanna come in and kinda, for anybody, you know.
That's why I don't know if I should be just the third, if I should just be a third wheel.
Right, yeah.
And I don't mind coming into all of them, you know?
Giselle, when are, can we just go over? Sorry.
Are you able to make any, no, wait, okay, I understand.
I'll be moving to four, but I think four is even too late.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't want people to stop here later than.
No.
If they, so that's okay.
That'd be turn into a whole nother feedback session.
We usually go like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and just bang it right out.
Yeah, for the month of March. Like, I just don't wanna conflict with staff meeting.
I think Beth has hers tomorrow. Mine is Wednesday and I believe Jason's is next week.
I think Beth has hers tomorrow, mine is Wednesday, and I believe Jason's is next week. Can't remember if that is Tuesday.
You wanna do the eighteen, nineteen, twenty?
I can't do the eighteen. And I can't do the twentieth. Uh, I could do the tw-.
Let's sign Sharon.
I could do the twentieth.
But what days does she go? She usually, and.
Wednesdays.
Okay.
So, let's tentatively sign Sharon for the eighteen.
The eighteenth with you stays, I'm sorry.
And then I'll come in, I'll come in as soon as I get here in town. I'll come into all three of them.
Okay.
I'll just be a little late. What dates can you do, nineteen, twenty?
I can do um, the nineteenth, I can do the twentieth, but it's gonna have to be, we're gonna start a raid after school. I don't have to be out by.
I can test base with Sharon on that one too.
On eighteen, ni- are we still talking eighteen, nineteen, twenty?
How do you wanna do it, any particular order? Those are not the dates of school, building level meetings, right? That particular week, the earlier?
Yep.
Is there anything flying off the calendar that would prevent us from doing?
Is, do we think two forty-five or three o'clock better? I don't really remember.
I do three, actually, I think three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'd only be able to be here for maybe a half hour on the twentieth.
Yeah, but I'll be here.
Wanna start at Valley View, Henry Wilson, High School?
Go right up the game.
Yeah, I was gonna say go in order.
I went to Valley View the last few times, so if you and Sharon wanted you Valley View this time, on the eighteen.
That's fine. Yep.
And then I can do the nineteenth. Um, you wanna do Henry Wilson?
Yep.
And then we'll do F.A.G. on the twentieth.
Yep. And Joel.
And Joel.
You're gonna come in.
I'm gonna do all of them. I'm just gonna be late for all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And at three PM, you said?
Yep.
Do you think that's, that will be okay with staff, since they're out at like.
Yeah, they all, when they entered the response, that seemed to be the most popular time.
So they can.
What was, three?
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause usually we start them at like two forty-five, but.
I mean, I'm sure if you show up and people are available and don't have students, they'll come in.
Right, yeah.
You know. Right, no, but that gives them time to kinda tidy up in their classroom, go to the bathroom, grab a snack, like, take a deep breath.
Right.
Yes.
No, that's good, yeah, three o'clock's good.
Yep.
Perfect. I just wanna make sure it was good with them.
Um, so, and by getting it done that week, we're just getting it in for our winter office hours before it turns to spring.
Yes.
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 Alright, cool, get that done. Is there any public participation? I'll add something. Uh, basketball season's wrapped up, congratulations to all of our teams. I believe our girls junior high team won the um, SVL tournament. Um, both of our high school teams uh, uh, made the state tournament and ended up in the top eight in the division, which is always nice, you get to host your first game. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Maddie Ricker, who recently scored a thousand points, she's the fourteenth member of that club. Since we started keeping track in like nineteen sixty-eight or nine or whenever it was. Um, and Maddie and Demary also made uh, Granite State uh, all-conference team. So congratulations to them. Allstate for the division will be coming out soon as well, so we'll see how our kids, our kids do. But we had a great uh, thousand-point ceremony for Maddie and uh, great attendance at our, at both of our um, home games here and on the road as well. So congratulations to our fall athletes and coaches for great seasons, excuse me, winter athletes and coaches for great seasons, um.
On the road was amazing, it was great to see just how, you know, it, it doesn't surprise us, like our community, the board, how many people show up and.
And Littleton's not just down the street, so.
Yeah.
Neither was Pittsville.
No.
There aren't too many places to eat around there.
No, there are not, yeah.
P&amp;H Truck Stop.
The kids had a lot of fun, a bunch of us stayed over. The kids had a great time, they were very well behaved, well represented.
Alright, uh, our next, well, just a reminder to folks that election day is coming up, town elections, school elections. Uh, Tuesday, March eleventh at the town hall. Um, good luck to all the candidates that are running for school board, candidates that are running for town and local offices. Um, and our next meeting will be March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, could have new school board members, could be you and I, we never know.
We never know.
We will restructure that night, no matter what, so, um, so good luck to everybody involved in that and.
It'll be St. Patty's Day.
Yes.
That's right.
Wear your green.
Oh, that's right.
Bring corned beef and cabbage.
Ooh, I'll have to wear my big hat, yeah.
Taryn's already ready.
Corned beef and cabbage.
Yeah. Alright, so uh, that is our next meeting, I will entertain, thank you to those of you who watched from home tonight. Uh, too cold for anyone to show up here, I don't blame them. Uh, I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session two under RSA ninety-one uh, A dash, two dash A, colon, three, two, A, B and C for nominations and resignations.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Lozay, second by Mrs. Doyle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, folks.
Good night.